I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Motion.
Motion by Jamie, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ashley, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Celebrations.
You can do that here for it.
Yep. Oh, sorry, I answered for you. Administrative reports.
Amy?
I don't have anything else.
Okay. High school, middle school, less than?
Okay, mine's long, sorry. Um, I added a couple things from what you saw, but some celebrations that we want to focus on are, our band is playing at football games again, so that's a huge positive, it's great to hear them. Hopefully we'll continue to hear them throughout the year. All state choir selections, Kendall Utech, Maria Nelson, Peyton Peterson, Carson Walters, with alternates being Arianna Langbe, Juliana Lind, and. They'll go Halloween?
Halloween is the weekend, nothing pinned down there, so.
Esports is going to be starting soon, I know the pre-start is coming up this week or next week. Seven students have signed up, so they've almost doubled their participation last year, it was four, so now we're up to seven, so that's good. And then Ms. Bowman is taking five students to the middle school music festival tomorrow. Juniors were the overall winners for our homecoming float and dress-up days throughout the week and all the games and stuff, so they get to go to Godfathers, funding from the student council. On October 29th is the day that they're going there, so. I thought everybody would be here that day, so they're going to take that trip there. Cross-country CSC winner Kendall Utech for the girls, so I'm going to give her a shout-out there. And our volleyball team won the Guinness Tournament on Saturday, so that was really fun to watch, awesome. So a lot of celebrations happening. Parent-teacher conferences were held on October 2nd. I thought we had a great turnout, we had 64% of high school parents attend and 75% of middle school parents. And I thought that was a really high percent. Usually in high school you see a dip, and to get that many parents here is a huge positive, so. I want to thank the leadership class for inviting Eric Klein to speak to the middle school and high school last Thursday about mental health, and then the leadership class did some team building with the students too. And it was really good to see the school, you know, come together and work together on that, so. That was a good experience, I think, for all the students involved.
He's a very good speaker.
Yeah.
Where's your friend though?
Uh, northern.
Northern.
Yeah.
Everdeen Central Prep.
Yeah.
1991.
On October 21st, which is next Tuesday, all of our nine through 11 will take the pre-ACT. We will pay for that test twice this year. We're going to do fall data and then spring data, and then the following year, we'll just do it in the spring when all of the juniors take the ACT. But then we have a starting point of how we can set some benchmarks for students, and so we want to get that taken. I'm going to a training, I got to decide when it's here Thursday. Side with days will be affected here, but to learn more about the pre-ACT and how it's going to benchmark with the ACT. But we're going to use that to help set some growth goals for our students, so. The idea is we'll get it taken, we're going to basically, nine through 11, everybody's testing at this time, 8:32 or 8:10 to 10:46, and then the seniors will maneuver where they need to go during that time. But it will be a testing day on the 23rd. I've also scheduled internet safety meetings with the DCI agent. They'll be in November 6th and 10th, and then November 10th after the board meeting we'll have a parent meeting with her. So I'm hoping that she, the goal there is to talk about social media, safety there, and what can happen. Pros and cons of having it, you know, but it's nice to get somebody from the outside to come in and have that discussion, and hopefully we can get some parents there, we're trying to dig in at center to get parents here. But it's an important thing that we kind of push aside, and so we want to try to get outside view in for that. And then on Friday, we met as a staff. I think we'll probably talk more about the all-staff training, but teacher SLO and observations, they're working on them. We looked at, looked at our testing data, broke some of it down for the staff, and so they can start looking at that and building SLOs according to that.
Question?
A lot of information, sorry. A lot happening here.
All right, thank you. Superintendent, all the true people.
All right, principal-wise, in November, I think it's going to be the first three Mondays is what we're going to do. We're going to, so one of our goals that we came up with with our family engagement stuff was students' goals, so students coming up with their own goals, whether it's life, school, whatever. So we're going to be doing a thing called Donuts with Grown-Ups in November, so the kids can pick somebody that they want to come in with them, and they'll sit and let like a goal sheet with them, and they'll go through with parent, grandparent, whoever, and they'll go through their goal sheet and want donuts, and everybody, or will have donuts with them. And I think we're going to do K1, 2, 3, and 4, 5, just going to split it up a little bit, so they're going to bring kids in there with parents. So we'll be doing that in November, and then right now, 4th and 5th grade are doing anti-bullying class. Just every Thursday of the month is anti-bullying month, as we've heard this month, so they're doing that. And then we also had a really good turnout, it was like, I think it was like 95% showed up for, and pretty much 100% if you count phone calls, showed up for parent-teacher conferences, so that was really good. 4H at the meal?
Yes.
I think 4H. Then first quarter ends on Thursday. Superintendent-wise, the project is done, first part is done. We got all the lines on there, we got, the seating is done, we're watering, so right now it looks really good. If you guys get a chance to look at it, go walk around, it's awesome, so. What's really good, they're missing one line though, so they're coming back, but they missed one line, so they got to put that on there. And then I'll talk about, kind of when we get to the second part of the project later on. We did have a really good PD with pay, with family engagement on Friday. We went over the DISC assessment, everybody kind of did some fun stuff, kind of getting to know people, kind of different personalities and different stuff like that. And honestly, the reason we do it is people have so many different personalities, and Terry, you can attest to this when you're kind of in that group, and what how different people react to different things. So just understand the staff as a whole better, and understand how to talk to each other. Makes it a better, you know, staff environment in the whole, so. School-wise, so the furnace, and we finally got an answer from the 10 companies that we have. The piping is wrong, or was wrong, in the high school for the furnaces. So that's why the furnace is cut out so short compared to like the elementary, which is still running strong after like 30 years. So what we're going to do for this year is we're going to clean up, we're going to clean them out completely, try and get them to work, because we had a lot of troubles last winter with them. So we're going to try and get them to work as best we can for this winter, and then we'll budget for them next year, and then make sure it's done right, so. And then.
Would that be something that they complete this summer, then like summer 26?
We try and do it for the next summer, yes.
So that nobody's hearing.
Correct. So, and again, I don't know what happened with the piping or whatever that it was done in the first place, but from what we have been told by three, four, or five different companies, which we tried to get an answer, that's the best thing that they can tell us is the piping is wrong and too small and it's not getting enough out. So we'll have to redo those because they're pretty much shut now, so. And then in November, I would like to have a serious discussion on paving the parking lots. They're going to have, Midland is going to have all their stuff, or pretty like, I think it's going to be just west of Woolsey for the whole next summer pretty much, for you and a row, and we could get a seriously good deal on it. So I'd like to at least have a discussion on that and see if that's something we want to do, because if we're going to do it, that's when we would do it, because we'd get huge cost off of it. So kind of initial, like I got an initial, would be around 300, is what it would be to pave everything. So the main parking lot, student parking lot, and the back.
Do you think with us having track meets and such, we're going to need more parking?
Yep, that's why I'd like to pave the grass spot out there.
The grass to the south of the building, take out that tree.
Yep. So another thing that goes along with that is, say we do that as well, we do have permission to close down that street during track meets, so that way buses can come park and we don't have anybody else in there, but you can still park in those, those parking lots. I mean, it's right there, so. Yeah, that is also, so that is just something I would like to have at least a discussion about, and kind of see what we want to do with that, but we would have to do probably some training and stuff, just what we have now. But I talked to Pitts about it, and they said, you know, honestly, we would only need to engineer, and then you need that company, and that'd be up here doing it, so. Pretty minimal, like it wouldn't have to be this, Pitts and BGR and all these companies having to do it, so. That's all, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, Mary, sorry. Okay, MidCentral, there was nothing for?
Just a couple of things, that if our staff wants to get set up for seven mindsets and let's go learn, that they just need to contact Renee at Core, and then the mental health grant that Core had was shut down, whenever, when all the grants were shut down, so we lost that grant. But through a bunch of letters that were written, we got that grant back. So we will see, it's just short of $4,000 in savings to school with that coming back through, so that was good news for us. Other than that, no more to worry about.
Core is also going to help out, we're going to get a behavioral therapist, they're going to help us out with that. We just have some needs in that area, so they're going to help us out with that and some training as well. So I'm going to talk a little bit about that quite a bit.
Thanks.
Thank you. I had a quick question. The Mr. Klein that came in, he was what grades?
Six through 12. Is that something middle school was?
Yep, six through eight were in the afternoon. Or in the morning.
Okay. All right, committee reports. Does anybody have anything?
Just do it, council.
Yeah, just besides them. Nobody else has anything, right? Okay.
Let's hear it.
Hi, I'm Kendall Utech, I'm student body president, and I'm, I'm the freshman class representative. And we're here to talk about some new things that's happening in student council. So one thing that we're implementing is a student of the month award. So basically, each month will have different criteria that students want to meet, like each month have a theme, like kindness, leadership, academic excellence, and then the student council will sponsor a student of the month for each high school grade level. So for October, the theme for student of the month was character. So this is basically a person who leads by example, makes responsible choices, and will just do the right thing for the sake of doing the right thing and not to get recognition. So the winners for October for student of the month were Jocelyn's, Juliana Lind, Peyton Peterson, and Carson Walters. And there's some sweet rewards that come with student of the month, I don't remember all of them off the top of my head, I think you might.
Yeah. It was, it's $10 for either concession stand, or you can invite a student council member to the wheel for ice cream and have an ice cream date, whatever. Get two open campus lunches during the month, and you get to go to the front of the line and watch, so. Those were, those were the rewards we came up with.
And then, and student of the month is voted on by the entire high school, so the high school will vote for each person.
Yeah. And then perfect attendance, it's pretty subservient, but the winners for this month is Jess Bolt, Ethan Burton, Penny O'Regan, and Katie Tech.
So each week we drop our perfect attendance in the previous week, and so then they get a $5 certificate. Whichever choice, I pick a $5 certificate as well. And what we've been doing for the last few weeks, and it's been going along. The student, or the student of the month is voted on by the student council and the teachers. So not the whole student body, but that whole student council and the teachers. Vote on that character.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, girls.
Thank you for coming.
Be great.
On the list, do you have the names of the winter summer?
Yeah.
Can I just take a picture of that, don't we?
You can take it too.
Can I, can you take it? Okay.
Thank you, girls.
Thank you. All right. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion?
Motion by Terry, do I have a second? Ashley, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. I'm going to pull, um, state report, current presentation.
I'm going to pull these out. All right, first page is attendance. It is going up, so that is good. So far this year, we have 97.33, and last year we went up about a half percent, so we'd like to see that. I would imagine that if keeps getting better, we have a, we've been going really well so far. So I would imagine it sticks around there, and that is very, very good. If you want, Martin was at 80%, so we'll take this all day, all week.
Can you remind us where we were at last year, do you remember?
95%.
95, yeah, it has a.
Maybe keep getting.
Yeah, we've really hit that hard though, especially Mrs. Sweet in high school, elementary, they're always there, so. They're never not there. So we have hit that pretty hard though, so it's not surprising to me that it is going up and probably will stay up, so.
Nice.
All right, you want to flip it? All schools on here, so this is all of our schools put together, okay? So how this goes is there's four levels, there's level one, level two, level three, and level four. In order to be considered proficient, you have to be in level three and level four, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And if you're in level one or level two, that does not count as proficient. Level two is you're on your way to proficient, and then level one is like serious, not good, so. Just so you guys know the levels. So right now, you guys can read those, and I'll kind of talk about, I'll have Mrs. Sweet talk about the middle school and high school. But if you guys want to flip to the elementary real quick, the top number is the school average, and then again, the middle is the district average, so everything together, and then the state average there. What we have right now is a lot of kids in level two, like a lot of kids that, say you even get three, four, or five of those kids to the level three, your percent goes up a lot. So we're going to be hitting those level two kids really hard. Usually your level three, level four will always be there, they don't usually dip down. So just trying to get those kids up from the level ones and level twos, it should get better.
Are these, I'm just, sorry, I have a question. Are these the tests like come home and like you're either below, meeting, that's not what these are?
So these are state assessments, so this is what we paid in the spring?
You probably got it in the spring. I think Kathy got sent the report. And then, in a, they, you get a report, in Maine, with your report, you should. Did it? That's what I, that's. Yes. It's a chart. Yeah. Oh, okay.
So what you're thinking about is our star assessments.
Yeah.
So our star assessments is our actual like school assessment, to see where our kids are at, and we take that three times a year. I will tell you, when you look at our test scores and our star assessment, even if you compare it to the state, we have, like, we're over 50% in everything right now in elementary. So our main thing is trying to get the standards, you have your set standards, and it seems to be when you take these state assessments that you get questions on there that our kids haven't seen before, so I don't know if they don't match up with our standards or what it is, but there's some things that we can do to like practice. There's interim assessment.
There's an interim assessment, there's also a practice, like taking kids through the practice site and having them go through the problems with the teachers, that is beneficial, so they know. It's not a multiple-choice test anymore, you know, it's a click and drag, or do this so they understand the problem, because a lot of times what happens is, is going, you want to stand what they're supposed to do on their computer, and so then they just answer. So it's important to go through those practice tests so they understand how to mitigate the computer to get the answers that they can get.
Okay, if you want to flip, I'll have you just talk about middle school and high school.
Sure, middle school, you know, looking at the scores of the middle school, they, they pretty much were the same as they had in previous years. Some things that we have adjusted this year that I'm hoping will see benefits in getting those level twos to level threes is split classes. So we've split the math and the ELA classes, so the class sizes are down to that 12, 13 for those subject areas. And I'm hoping that helps, we're also implementing the study hall, and then this second quarter, we're looking at trying to take the students' math scores and having them do curriculum during that study hall if they've already got everything else done, trying to push and advance those kids in some areas that might be their weak areas, so giving them some incentives. Those are some ideas that we're, we're trying to get more individual instruction for some of those. I really, after talking with the teachers, I feel like the split classes is helping definite behaviors, which in turn should help learning, because if you're not dealing with the behaviors, then hopefully they're returning more information. But you're also, it's hard, you know, you're, you're looking at, this is last year's, this is this year's 7th and 9th graders on this test score. So they've moved up now, so you know, everything, it's going to change every year just because your classes are changing. And same with the high school, when you look at a high school, you know, you're only tested 11. So that's the only thing that shows if you flip the page. Our, our high school did awesome, so that would be this year's senior class, and we knew that last spring. We, you know, one thing we did implement was the incentive that senior privileges would start right away for those that achieved a three or a four on all their tests, they got to walk in the door and they got senior privileges. I don't know if that helped or not, but it was an incentive, otherwise everybody got to start four weeks in, you know, so they got an extra four weeks of that. Not a huge change, but it was an incentive. We, this, this next year is going to be completely different because we're taking the ACT. So this test is no longer the test that we're testing for the juniors, and we're testing ACT. We're hoping that all juniors will take, we're hoping this makes a difference. All juniors will take an ACT prep class in the spring aligned to help strategize for that ACT, and then it'll work up until that ACT testing, and so hopefully they'll get some practice taking the ACT.
Remind me, was that a state or federal change?
State, state change, and there's not a lot of information out there right now, what we've been given, that's why, like, I'm going to another training. It's, nobody's happy about it, but what I, at my principals meeting, the talk is that they're going to take a range, and they're your level ones in a range, and they're your level twos in a range, and they're your level threes and, you know, your range for your level fours. So hopefully we can get those kids that are, get them to that three area. So this goes back to where you were talking about this year doing it twice, so by the time that we get the score next year, it would have been the third time that. They only, as a school, have done it, because we would do it this year twice, and then next year when they score on it? They'll score on it in the spring. So our juniors will still score on it in the spring, every year. Yeah. Starting this year. Starting this year. Yeah. So we'll, the pre-ACT will give us an idea of where they're at, and then what we can do to try to get them prepared for that ACT in April. There's three windows, I'm guessing we're going to try to do the March-April window. And then, but the 9th and 10th graders will test both times. That's not a state data, so that won't be applied to this, but it will help us know where they're at and how much they're. Got it. Yeah. Yeah, and it doesn't matter if the students will take their ACT, some, they can take it again, but whatever they score when they take it here is a score that will be reported. So they're not qualified for their ACT. They don't have to take it. They don't have to pay for it, and they don't have to take it yet. No. And it'll be done hopefully in, my, what I'd like to do here is two days. So normal, you know, all of us, when we took the ACT, it was, you know, your four-hour session. They will allow us to do it into two days, but you have to do math and English. Is math and English, or math and reading? Maybe all three. Those have to be done in one, one day, and then the science and writing, our kids have to do that, or they didn't, that's not going to be part of your composite. A lot of information coming on that, but that will, will keep you updated as it comes out, but. So that's going to look different, but our seniors, they did phenomenal on this test. You can see that they were above the state average, and we definitely gave them ice cream last year, and, you know, gave them a big celebration because it was pretty good, so. Very good, yeah. Goes to all the teachers, because really, everybody's involved in that path up to their junior year, so.
And then just that back part, if you want to take a look, you just go over, of course, you want to talk about that real quick.
Yeah, sure. Coursework readiness, assessment readiness, college and career readiness, so they have little areas of where they judge you on, or they grade you on, your, the students and their course, were they ready for the post-high school assessment readiness, are they ready? College and careers, your CTE classes, and your, we did the NCRC test, is the one that we've given. I'm guessing we're going to, the state will not fund that anymore, but it's probably what we'll still have to show, use to show that we're testing our kids to see if they're college and career ready. On-time graduation and then high school completion, obviously those are all good, good scores there. We're working on like those areas, and that's just something that, the assessment readiness, that's, that's just a hard deal. Like the pre-ACT and doing ACT prep and those things will hopefully help. That's horrible.
And then that last page just goes over the, that previous year, and just shows how many kids went to public, private, out-of-state, two-year, four-year, and then our average ACT score for that last year. That counts all of our kids, correct?
That counts everybody that took the ACT, so that's not just seniors or not, it's any, any kid from our school that took the ACT, that was our average ACT score. So. That's not, it's not bad. I mean, I know it's not at the state average, but we had a lot of kids to get. I'm trying to think of, I don't know exactly how many, but I know a lot of our students.
Questions? Good?
I have questions, I mean, I think those middle school and elementary scores are concerning, I feel like.
Don't, don't disagree. So that's why, and like, we're working on different things, you're not going to see the results in one year, that's the hard part is. And the other thing, like I told the teachers here, don't get so discouraged, these kids were COVID kids in their first and second grades, and that's when you do your reading, your math, your prime, like, those are big time times in those kids' lives of learning and development, and so if some of that is missed because they missed a quarter of school, and then we're in a strange world for, I mean, everybody across the state, I think, is kind of dealing with some of that, but.
All the schools are on the same road. I will say that. I'd love to develop test scores, pretty much everybody's in the same road as we are.
So it, it could stem to some of that, and it's hard to catch, when you think of a whole quarter, or probably even a half a year. of craziness, um, and how that plays into the students. You guess, we have a higher number of specialized patient kids in those classes.
And they still have to pay for it. No matter what.
So that plays into it too. And you, you're giving them, you're, you're working with everybody to try to help them increase their score. When, when we sat and looked at the data with the, when I looked at the middle school, almost everybody's score went up. It's just that it's not going up. And, um, you know, it's like, they're growing. You can see that they're growing, but we just can't get them to grow at the high pace. And maybe that's, I, I just don't know, like, if a summer school, I don't know if people would, um, I don't know if they would, you know, in your middle school, if they would buy into that or not, but it's something to consider if we can try to redeem some of that. Unfortunately, middle school's tough just because some of the kids.
And I don't think our scores went down.
They did not go down.
None of our scores?
None of them. No, none of them went down. So that's a positive. That's, you know, we gotta look at some of those and some of these changes that we're making and hopefully they'll continue helping. And I try to tell the kids all the time, we want you to grow. You know, it's not, you're not a number, you're not a, you know, we want you to learn and we want you to, to grow. And that's even the incentive for the juniors. It was, if you moved from a level one to a level two, you got senior privileges. So if you made that move from a two to a three or a one to a two, I will, you know, I will reward you for that. So those are the things, like, it's not, it's not necessarily that we, you know, we want to see them grow. And that's our biggest.
You didn't just give it to the high achievers, you gave it to those who all accomplished.
Absolutely. Yep.
Any other questions? All right, moving on, policy review and adoption.
Okay, there's gonna be one change on there. That BFD has now changed to the has now changed to BDDC, which was put on there, um, before B.
Which one?
Um, our sheets are BDDC, BDD.
Yeah, on, this is right, so it was BFD, so now it's BDDC.
Do you have a?
B, oh, for the voting methods?
Yeah.
Sir, policy number for the evaluation of the superintendent?
BFDDC.
It used to be EC.
BDF, now it's BDDC because it was, it should have never been BFD.
We have it as BDDF, so we're changing it to BDDC.
BDDC is starting back to.
So.
No, 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 BDDF is right.
BFD policy?
BFD was what it was before, was wrong. And now it's BDDC.
Oh, so that's already correct on this.
Already correct on this, I corrected on this, but it, it came to me, like, what it is on the website is BFD. Because it's not supposed to be BFD, it's supposed to be BDDC.
Okay. So ultimately just that should be yellow as well because that was cheat areas.
Yes, sorry.
And I don't really think.
Honestly, it wasn't, there wasn't a whole lot changed. There was just some, um, wording, just a wording. There's a lot of wording that was changed because of new laws that were enacted in the past. When were these last updated? Fourteen, so eleven years. So the past eleven years, there has been some changes that just haven't been put into here. So just in yellow is any of the new laws or changes that came.
This, um.
Yeah.
Can you post this? Little excerpt on our website or on the Facebook page, maybe? That the minutes, about the minutes? Like the minutes will be within the BDDG. I think Amy gets a lot of phone calls on why our minutes aren't updated or whether or not on the website. And if this can be posted, I think that would, I mean, I think within the twenty days, like, you have twenty days up for the board meeting to put them in the newspaper, but like, any person within ten days. So within ten days, they have to be able to, it is per this policy.
Yes.
So if we can put that somewhere, so Amy can't get any phone calls the day after our board.
So technically, I mean, it'd be two and a half weeks. It's technically, it's four days.
So I just wanna make sure that somebody, like, it's, it's out there to the public. So that everybody's informed on what, what to do.
Um, yeah, other than math, really it's just updating, um, like, if you look, if you go to the last page, BDDV, it's just updating the consent agenda and the agenda format to have in there, um, just to keep it. They just wanted, the state, from what I read, is they just wanted to keep it all the same. So they had to just put that into the policy. Other than that, should be good. No more, no more seventy, ten out of time, Tara.
Oh, yeah, um, one question, though, we don't have on our agenda. What did you say to the answer? I was trying to see.
No more time policy, that's at least.
Um, on our agenda, we don't have establishment of forum. Do we have to do that legally now? Otherwise, we need to add that to our agenda for next month? Just an idea?
Um, on, yeah, hold on.
I mean, clearly we know, we just need to wait for a number, but
Right.
I just don't know if that has to be with a new, new policy. Next month, I'll send them out earlier.
You wanna take that home?
We can, I don't, I mean, it's a, we can, we can put it on the agenda. It's just if we have it in our policy, it has to be on the agenda. Either way, I'm okay with it.
I mean, I'm not seeing anything about actually having to establish a forum, so. As long as we just push this one, you just wanna push the
Yeah, let's just hold this one.
BDDV is on that meeting?
Yep. Okay, if there's no other questions, do I have a motion to approve BDDD forum? Um, BDDE parliamentary procedure, EDDE dash one parliamentary procedure guide, BDDE dash two parliamentary procedure motion, BDDF voting methods, BDDG minutes, BDDH public participation at board meetings, and BDD, nope, BDDC, policy dissemination. We'll do that and then I'll discuss the next one.
I motion.
The motion by Terry, does that have a second? Second by Ashley, all those in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion, Carrie. Um, nine point two dash, point ten is the evaluation of superintendent. So we have always, the last couple of years, we've used that, that evaluation. Um, it's not on our policy, so we've never approved it, so I just am asking for approval for that to be put on the website as a policy.
Just in case I leave. I motion to approve the superintendent evaluation form.
All right.
Policy.
Motion by Terry, do I have a second?
I have a question on that. Are we talking about the one where the majority of the questions on there, we really have no clue?
No, so this is the one that, like, I took a bunch of different evaluations and I made it from that. We've used it for the last two years. I think it's just, I think it's just been two years.
Okay, I just remember, remember that there was one of
Yeah, the one they were using was, yeah, I'm not sure. This one was like a combination, I kind of took, like, a bunch of schools around us, like, and just kind of needed an evaluation that would fit here. But then I'm assuming we've used it and then just never, I don't know, never approved it as a policy, but I feel like it should be on the policies.
Yeah, there's a, I mean, there's a policy for
For the evaluation.
For the, but it's no, like, actual
No.
What you get used on.
No, and that's gonna have to, I mean, we're gonna have to do that soon, so I just figured if we can get it this, this month.
And that form will be attached within that policy, correct?
Yeah, we'll cash with it.
Yeah, yeah.
I have a second.
Second by Jamie, all those in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign. We should, Carrie, win. I'll be gone for the December meeting. I'll be gone for the December meeting, Ashley. Um, so typically we do it then. So that's, um, so typically we do it in December, if we could push it off till January, because really we don't have to not till February. So she can go over it in December. And I'll let you know it about everybody before I leave. We'll discuss it as a board on the January meeting, if that works. Okay? All right. Surplus six chairs and one desk. Is that broken?
Yeah.
Okay.
Motion.
Motion by Jamie, second.
A second.
And by Terry, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion, Carrie. Approve architect for football concessions, bathrooms, bleachers, and crow's nest.
Okay, so we're gonna be doing Civarella under Adam Mitchell. Um, I talked to Pitts and I talked to a few other architecture firms, um, in Sioux Falls, and that was our best fit, um, going forward. He actually came up here, probably a month ago, um, we met with him and went over kind of what we want for the project and then, so we're gonna go Civarella, Adam Mitchell.
Which one? That's not this, I was
No, there is not one for it. We just approve it.
What's this for?
This is more the construction manager.
Oh, next. All right, and we only got one or we just, we don't have to?
Do you just have, just Civarella or just?
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve Civarella? As the architect?
Motion.
Motion by Ashley, do I have a second?
Sir.
Second by Jamie, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion, Carrie. Open construction manager bid.
So I had advertised for this, made it, the deadline has a four o'clock today. And, um, this is the only one that I ended up with. I was gonna end up with a couple more, but. So this is, we had to do this before, when we did the track. And, um, so. This is basically, and then it's coming from Pitts, but this is what we had to do so Pitts could then also bid on different parts of the project.
Yeah, so they'll do, so the construction manager may do this because they'll do all the bidding and then liability and everything like that as a construction manager.
So we just would approve Pitts and then we're, they do the rest.
And then they do the rest, yes. So the plan right now is, um, Pitts, I, I don't know if they're gonna keep the trailer here or not. They didn't tell me they are. Um, so they're working, as soon as we get this approved, they're gonna get the architects to get plans and everything laid out. They said that should take about, they said we should have the plans back by late November, early December. And then we'll go through the plans and then we'll bid out right away in January, um, and put a very early start date on it. They said it shouldn't take a whole lot and then we'll plan on a end of the season track meet, kind of a track meet at the end of the season. We'll plan that out.
Are we turning down the crow's nest by ourselves?
No.
So we're gonna do it?
We'll do all the equipment in there, so we'll take all the equipment out, we'll do all that. We'll keep the all of that and then we'll just repurpose that one, because all that equipment can be a new one. Because there's nice stuff in there. That's opposite of things and everything, so, now I get, we should be getting new stuff like that.
Okay, so we're, what's currently there for the crow's nest and the bathrooms, we are demoing that, but taking everything out of it, like, of value?
Yes.
And repurposing, but we're gonna remove that structure.
Correct.
And re, and what, are, are we still waiting to look at what the next plan is on bathroom and?
We have a very, I mean, we know exactly where stuff's gonna go, but they actually have to get us the actual architecture plans now.
Okay.
And that's what Civarella is working on right now. So concession stand, stadium bleachers, and then a new crow's nest. For that. And how it's looking right now, we should not have to dip too much into, um, capital outlay. We'll be able to probably pay with our contingency that we're gonna get back. Probably gonna get back a pretty big chunk of contingency, probably like, I, I don't know, I think it's a hundred fifty.
Of our original project.
Of our original project, just on contingency, that doesn't even count what we have underneath already, which is, I think, another hundred, almost. So we should have another two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from this original project to put into that. So we should not have to, and all it's gonna be is wood structure. It'll be nice, but it's gonna be wood structure, we're not gonna do any, um, like, cement, or, well, we'll have to do cement on the ground, but we're not gonna do any, um, brick or anything like that. Um, and we have, there's already piping out there for water and sewer and all that, so they'll be able to just run that to the new concession, so I'm thinking it's not gonna be, it shouldn't be too much. Like, we should be able to stick around, we should only be able to pull a little bit out of our capital outlay fund right now, so.
Yeah, our capital outlay is already, really in spot, isn't it?
Yeah.
Needs to be utilized as well.
Correct.
So we think it'll be over two hundred and fifty thousand?
Yeah, I would say, just with electrical and plumbing and all that stuff. The bleachers alone are probably gonna be one fifty, probably, I would guess, depending on how big we get them. I wanna, what we had before, it was gonna be around a hundred, but if you switch to the stadium bleachers, it'll probably be a little more. So, and they still gotta do some fencing around there, so some of those little things.
Will we know by November meeting what we're getting back for contingency? When will we know that?
Uh, I'll know that very soon, like, within the next week or so.
It's about done, I guess, and, and in this month, they'll probably, I'll send you my last.
Yeah, so we'll, pretty good.
So in November, can you bring us, um, what is coming back for contingency? What we have left of our project money, so we know exactly what's coming out? If you're wanting to talk about also paying also paving for three hundred thousand dollars?
Absolutely.
That would be a question.
Okay, you got it for them?
Do I have a motion to approve Pitts as our construction manager?
I motion to approve Pitts as construction manager.
Motion by Terry. Do I have a second?
Second.
And by Ashley. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, same sign. Motion, carry. Approve resignation from Leo Hopper for FCC LA advisor. That'll also to approve.
I second.
Yeah, yeah.
What I said?
I thought you said approve her for FCC LA.
Oh, no, approve the resignation, sorry.
I second.
Jamie and Terry?
Yeah.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, same sign. Motion, carry. Annual winter skid steer lease, or snow removal.
The same thing we've done in the past.
It's just that.
Riley, get healthier, remove that snow.
We own a skid steer now, and we also lease one.
Correct.
Okay.
Two of them.
And you're gonna run it?
Yeah.
I would like to see a skid steer driver's course to protect our curb from any further damage.
I was just gonna say, you guys thought they didn't.
That was not me. I walked before I was here. That was a brand-new curb three years ago.
Yeah, it was. Yeah, we just did that curb, yeah.
I think it's, I think it's people that are pulling it in.
Pulling it in, so it hit, and that's what's doing it.
I mean, I had somebody telling me that it's because they used quickcrete for it, and they didn't use the right kind of concrete, and that's why it's falling apart.
Doesn't help that people keep.
Really?
Just saying.
That's interesting. There was no steel in it.
There's no.
There was no rebar or nothing.
Where, where it drains too, there's like a hole, I mean, like, how is it? It was like, it's just that bottom, like, or it looks like it, doesn't look strong. The big splat.
What was that done?
Three years ago.
Last year.
That was it?
Yeah.
Moved out.
It was concrete when they did it, though, because they did it at the same time they poured the other stuff, that there was no steel in it, it should have been pinned to the sidewalk and pinned to the, the little giveaways to get out there, no rebar, nothing, yeah.
Okay, well, that explains it. Super fun. So we're looking into that also, after you're done. Any suggestions?
I don't, can you just make it a flat? Can you just make it like a handicap ramp?
If we made it smooth, there's people could ultimately, versus a curb, if they sloped it, but my, my idea is, since the professionals are already not really mastering it, maybe their track boys can maybe do something. Requirements?
I mean, they can. Just flat. I mean, we have, if we have students that are handicapped, they have to, with a wheelchair or anything, they have to get out there at the gym.
Right, because you gotta get, you gotta get water past it, though.
It's not like we're gonna go right in the office, too.
I mean, not if it slopes down towards the parking lot.
But to slope it, if you start at the sidewalk, you're gonna go right across where the water comes from the gym. I mean, that's the curb that that flows through around that way.
I mean, while you're, we're looking at it, can you just make sure we're ADA compliant with it, because it seems that we might not be with our front door being there, not having a way to have. Are we, are we compliant?
We are, but they have.
There's a spot to get in, or there's a spot that is, where the handicap parking is. There's no curb.
Are those doors open? I don't really know.
They can follow the side.
That seems like they have to.
Can't park in front of those doors, though.
No, not while it's.
They drive a tank in out of the vehicle.
Jamie?
Yes. Doesn't bother me.
Um, I would see if maybe you can just flatten it out.
Okay.
The skid steer can come right up there, and then you wouldn't have.
You have all that drainage that you have to figure out anyway, so.
Maybe we just need to wait till next year and figure out the curb then, just leave it.
I don't think you can do a slope there, because then the cars are just gonna come closer.
Come closer, but it's the door pretty soon. That's what I'm worried about. That's exactly what was going through my head.
It's amazing, when people did have.
Can we just put a hitching post right there? That'd be cool.
Well, if you put a, if you do put one of those parking posts, maybe, you know, in front of it, they hit the post first.
We'll have to do what, put some, put tires in the corner.
They got posts hit.
There's guys back.
Anyway. All right, um.
Motion.
Motion by Jamie. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ashley. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, same sign. Motion, carry.
I got one thing. I didn't put it on the agenda, but we can take care of it in November, because delegate assembly isn't until then. Be thinking about who wants to be our delegate. Nobody's interested.
Jamie is, yeah. You voted last year.
Or if Jamie just wants to volunteer right now, I.
What's the date on it?
So November twenty-first.
Maybe go craft some school, have a delegate assembly.
But just wanted to put that little bug in your ear, if there's somebody that wants to volunteer, or, okay, that we can do it, I don't know. I meant to do that for this month.
All right, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting at six thirty-six?
Motion.
She says everybody wants to be there. Motion by Ashley. That's me by Jamie. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Technically, still under an eye.